All right. Alex, what have you got for us?
All right, so this work session is really to kind of keep plugging away, at least if not bit by bit, chunk by chunk, with the standards and maybe some better changes to administer certain sections, more objective type standards, obviously, has been sort of the charge that staff's been leading. With this meeting, I have taken a crack. Friday afternoon, I got to a point where I had to just put something out because I had just really racked my brain to try to consider each and every single possibility with application of the revised text that we've had based on applications that we know we've had come before in my experience here, and just see, make sure I'm not creating an issue, really, just try to play through every possible scenario I could. But what we wanted to focus on with this meeting, of course, we've tackled things from swimming pools and spas, fences, shutters, awnings, help me out, I'm trying to think of whatever. So I really think windows and doors and exterior materials is probably the next big one and probably likely one of the last items that staff has readily identified that we can probably really tweak to allow for more objective application to the standards on a minor level only. Again, as we've seen some of the changes that we've brought forth and discussed, although not formally agreed upon on anything, that most of the changes are either clarifications or allowances for some minor level approvals and whatever objective criteria needs to be applied to within the standards. So with that, you know, we can discuss some of these, you know, of course, the red line, strike through, underline format that we've got here for these. My intent is, if we can get some general consensus on some of these materials, the next step is to have Shannon and I get together, comb through all that we have discussed and gain some sort of unofficial consensus, at least on the books, and bring forth a comprehensive document with same format that we've been used to, and then have the opportunity for potential action and recommendation by the HPC to go to village council. So again...
Can we add signage to that?
We could. You know, I actually had a call about some signage yesterday in the Village Center area, of course, because that's about where you're going to have any real signage in the historic district. And, you know, our PDO is a lot clearer, more objective, and I would say stringent than our historic standards for signage. I think there's, it's probably something we could take a look at. I'm fearful because of where we've, I think, come, you know, I didn't realize, I haven't seen you guys since the new year or since Christmas and New Year holiday. I would like to get something possibly adopted. So I don't, I don't want to take too many steps back, but I think our signage section could be addressed a little bit better, a little bit clearer, and maybe have some requirements in there because they're really recommendations. They leave something to be desired, I will say that. But, so going on to what the material you guys have for you today, you know, you've seen a lot of the applications that have come before that could be a material change or adding a window or removing one, maybe that's not on a quote unquote "principal" or primary facade, or if you're changing the material from something that, A, isn't consistent with the guidelines as it is, to something that actually is consistent with the guidelines, it's elevated to a major work. So an attempt to try to, you know, cover some of those bases, propose a minor work, and this would be a new bullet, is resurfacing buildings with a compatible substitute material that would match the original in style, dimension, depth, and profile. And, of course, any proposal that would, could be authorized as a minor work must meet whatever applicable standards are in place, too. So it's not that it just meets this statement. So just one example, it could be a residence in historic district, vinyl siding, vinyl lap siding, and they want to propose to do a fiber cement style that has the same, the same look, the same dimension, the depth, and profile. By reading of the standards, obviously, that is a step into more compliance. Obviously, color and everything else would have to be in the palette or even match that of what the existing house would be. Right now, again, that's a major work. That's something I feel that myself or any of my staff could make that call, I'm comfortable making, there's no real judgment being exercised there by a staff member. You know, if you have shake siding, you know, it's not, it's not saying that you're able to take a, you know, you have a masonry, exterior masonry, you know, brick home or stucco, and you're wanting to put fiber cement lap siding or shake siding all around, that's a complete change from, you know, so that wouldn't meet this criteria. Even though it is, it could be seen as a allowable substitute material, you're completely changing the style, dimension, depth, and profile.
Alex, just assuming we come to agreement on the language you're proposing here, we are not making formal approval of that, we're basically giving you the okay to incorporate that into a document that will come before us for formal approval.
Comprehensive, absolutely. And we kind of wanted to take this approach instead of, you know, maybe a narrower focus, and hopefully, when we do have that opportunity to bring that document to you guys, we all can have some sort of remembrance of what discussions we had, and that if, you know, you may not have been fully on board with it at the time, and, you know, it would be an opportunity to just, you know, recall, I have some concerns over XYZ, and maybe in an effort to not, you know, get, pick your battles is what I'm, you know, going to try to get at, if we can. We're not going to probably get a full unanimous consensus, you know, I'm not, and I've, I understand that. But, you know, it would be an opportunity to have a little bit more discussion on it, but the intent with these is, let's hammer out as much as we can with these, you know, these one offs and with those specific examples or what language we have, and then, when it comes time to have it on the books, you know, vote however you need.
So if we take this, this first example, resurfacing buildings with a compatible substitute material matching the original in style, dimension, depth, and profile, that would be minor work, therefore, that means that you or your staff would make the determination whether this proposal that comes before you is a compatible substitute, correct?
Yes.
Could I, could we extend that just a bit more? For example, if there's a house with a material, say a window, say it's got a vinyl window in it, and somebody wants to replace that with a wood window, could we add some language that says if what's existing is not in conformance with the standards, and the applicant wishes to replace it with something that is conforming, that that would be minor work?
I think if it is conforming, it would by virtue be an allowed minor work.
Yeah, I guess we just don't say that.
Does the minor work now say that? Is that what you're saying, Alex? Somewhere it'd have to be authorized, I would think.
Vinyl may not be a specifically good example because we've kind of come to the view based on multiple builders that it's actually okay.
Yeah.
Not sure that's what our standards say in writing.
That's the question, then, that's what...
Let's try vinyl siding, then.
All right. Alex is changing, is looking for the original question, so...
Or another example would be inappropriate shutters that don't match the window to appropriate shutters that match the...
Well, shutters, shutters can be a minor work item, so obviously, they would need to match for us to be able to approve it. So that's covered.
Would it, would it be, my question to follow on, then, is, would it be, if they were, let's say, just rectangular shutters on a window with a bow over the top of it, if they wanted to upgrade them, the shutters, to fit the window, would that be minor work?
Yeah, it, yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
Because shutters are classified as minor work, and obviously, that meets the standard that if they're not operable, they at least...
Look like they can.
Yeah, and be at least half the size, et cetera.
Well, then, then you miss the color palette. No pink in the color palette?
I wouldn't bet on that.
I thought every color in the rainbow was...
If you look at that, there's about everything else in there if there isn't pink.
Alex, if someone had vinyl siding and they replaced it with, say, hardy siding that was a little different in dimension, is that, I don't know if that fits in with what you're saying.
Excuse me? Can you all remember to please speak into your microphones, move them a little bit closer?
I think any movement from non-conforming closer to conforming ought to be minor.
Yeah, so you're expanding what's here, then, right?
Yeah, I'm trying to add a little bit.
If you move towards bringing it more in line with our standards...
Yeah.
Well, what we need to do, there's, there's a couple of things I think we can do. I don't want to have really long laboring run-on bullets here under, under minor work, so it's kind of hard to think on the fly a little bit right now.
How about just at the tail end of that sentence?
An "or"...
Including replacing non-conforming material with conforming material.
Or just...
Regardless of size, dimension, and all that?
Oh, it's got to mean all the other things that are there.
Oh.
It's an "and," not an "or."
Yeah, but I thought you were being broader.
I don't know, maybe compatible means what I'm trying to say.
I wouldn't say so, anyway.
If it had little skinny vinyl siding clapboard, and you're putting in hardy that's larger width, that has to come before us because of that dimension difference?
I would think so, yeah.
Really?
Yeah. Because you're changing the, really, the overall look of the building. If you're putting the same thing and you don't see any changes in look, then I think that's okay.
And...
Or if you're changing it, like the shutters example, where it's, we're actually getting better instead of worse, that's okay.
Well, not to mention a certain application, but would one maybe not be before us today were this change in effect?
Well, this change won't go into effect, anyway. The change won't go into effect, anyway.
No, no, but would it obviate the need for that to come before us?
One, one of the changes would be classified as minor, one would be a major still.
Yeah, okay.
And even based on what I'm proposing, so not, not to jump around too much, but I'm still trying to think of how we can kind of check a box David's missing, too, because I don't want to overlook that opportunity.
And I can imagine, without much difficulty, an existing, say, two-story structure somewhere that, that was originally built with wood Dutch lap siding, that somebody later on put vinyl siding over, of a completely different dimension. I'd sure like you to be able to easily say...
So, so that, too, is what I'm thinking, there's some terminology that we've, we've had and I've seen before, where "or" that matches, or closely matches, that of the original with documentation being provided. Like, if you bring us a photo from the archives that clearly show, now, it's going to be hard to get down to, is it five inch in width, or is it seven inch in width?
But, I mean, you're going to have to make a call on that, yeah.
It's compatible, and yes, we try to get as objective as possible, right?
Why don't you...
I make interpretations daily.
Right.
You know, there's some of us who are authorized to, there, there is that opportunity always, that that be a different view or interpretation be asked for, called for, or appealed. Not saying let's open it up, but compatible, then if you do, you take it a step further, you do your best within the context of this bullet.
Right.
Within how you define that, that term, which we do have in our standards...
The decision process, the decision, any work minor.
And if, and if there's not enough evidence that can be provided, too, don't, you know, there's not somebody just coming and providing us an application that, I'm going to this and it is XYZ, just like the original. No, we're going to, we're going to be that back and forth. Bring me something, I can't just have just your word for it, I need something to prove it. Bring me a product spec sheet, bring me something.
I think, David, what you're trying to get at is, if there's something that comes before us and all seven of us look at it and say, well, of course, we're going to approve that because of the direction that it is taking the building, that's what you're trying to capture in a way that is not too subjective, so that staff can actually make a decision. Yes, this seems plausible.
Right.
And we've done some form of testing to be sure that what's being presented really is in that direction.
Right. I don't know how you say it, but basically, if they're going back more like it should be, then...
Yeah, but if there's vinyl underneath the cedar shakes, then you got a problem, right? So you have to call it conforming.
Well, I think you got a bigger problem if you got vinyl under cedar shakes, anyway.
You have to call it conforming, then, or something, right?
Both are two...
You can do it if you're going to something more conforming, basically.
There you go. Why don't you make a note and figure those words out for the next round?
Yeah, Alex, come on.
Or, gives me some concern, because, you know, it's subjective. Well, in the first place, it implies that something might be approved which isn't in compliance, but it's not as badly in non-compliance as what's already there. And that's the kind of judgments that it seems to me it's unfair to expect the staff to make. That's the kind of judgment that seems to me we have to make. If it moves it fully to compliance, it's okay. Yes. But more compliant may not be... Or not, not as badly not compliant. Not as badly, not compliant is not...
And I wouldn't propose any language like that, and nothing's in our standards now that is close to that. It would have to obviously still clearly check the box, not...
Or kind of, or increase, or any of those wouldn't work.
Yeah.
If it's more compliant, you can authorize it.
Or it, period.
Period.
It is compliant.
It is compliant.
It meets the standards and it is clearly authorized.
That's the answer.
And, and I think better of it now, I think some of the, you know, there's, I think there's two, there's a, kind of similar to what I've gotten here, when you're basically changing the material, it's just that simple, you're changing the material...
But it looks the same.
It's a, it's an allowable substitute material, but the, you know, the, again, depth, dimension, profile, et cetera, is the same. Then I think another bullet could be to try to get to what David's talking about is, you know, we kind of have it in here already where you're basically removing, it's removing, it could be removing, or going back to original siding material based on historical documentation of the original material.
How you word that, but I understand what you're saying.
And I don't think it's, it's probably not going to come across our desk. It really likely will happen very infrequently, if at all, but it could be there. The next, the next item, well, I'm sorry, John.
I'm sure, go ahead.
I was just, I mean, I, I think we're kind of, obviously, I'm not seeing any real heartburn with considering changing in materials to something that is a compatible material and is completely conforming with the standards. And that's, again, that's mainly just for the exterior material, not windows, not doors. That's another subsection where we've seen a lot of what most folks would consider quite a minor change. So what I have crafted here is replacement and new installation of doors and windows that are the same style, material, size, and color, or an allowable substitute material compatible in size, proportion, shape, positioning, pattern, size, and color with the structure. That is pretty much language that's in the standards now that is a recommendation, anyway, about if you're adding a new window or door that, basically, how I read that is, if you have a six over one, if, if all your windows are six over one, and they're all this dimension, basically, or, you know, you have them on your, on your facade, and not proposing this on the street-facing elevation as well, because that is a standard that's already in there, then you can add a new window that matches your existing in style, the same material, same color. You're not adding a, a red, you know, one over one on, on the back, it's, you know, white with, again, six over one, for example. Snap-in muttons are not going to happen, that we can approve on a minor work level, because all those standards will still be in place. I go back to like the Village Green, the property on Village Green, where the, the rear door was added on the back, again, it's not on the street-facing elevation, what they chose matched the dimension, I would call it proportion and position of, on that structure in relation to the other windows, and the style, everything was the same.
Talking about six over one windows, is the, is the ratio of top to bottom, is that a style, or is that an architectural detail?
I would consider that a style, I mean, we could say detail, we could use detail.
So if I, if I was replacing all the windows in a house, and they were six over one now, but for whatever reason, I wanted four over one, or vice versa, and I'm going to do it all, from one conforming style to another conforming style, does that make it major work?
I think it would, because the way I want to apply it is, what's there on that structure now?
Even though what is being replaced would be deemed conforming, it's different, and therefore, okay...
And it would have a different impact on the building, and looking at it from different, if you're just replacing it with exactly what you got in there, six over ones, then you're not changing anything. If you change it to four over ones, now you're changing something that would be clearly obvious to the exterior of that building.
And it may very well be that it checks the box in the standards, and that COA be granted, but it would be up to follow that process and produce that.
But the "and new installation" leads me to think that you could approve a brand-new window.
Exactly.
And it does include that?
That's, that's what I'm proposing, yes.
If it looks the same as all the other windows.
If it's that six over one, and the same window.
If it's a six over one to start with, then you're putting a six over one in there.
I mean, you're putting a window where there wasn't one before.
Yes.
You're going to do that as minor work?
Yes.
Just on the back, or not front side, or...
Here, so, next page over, under windows and doors, what I'm proposing is language that adding or changing original window and door openings are not permitted on the principal facade. So if new uses, it goes on, basically, if, if there's a code requirement that says you've got to have one here, and it's on that principal facade, or it's got to be larger, then, you know...
Well, why not front facade? Why are we changing?
Street-facing facade.
Yeah. Because what if you're a corner?
I mean, I'm not sure, that was going to be my question, what's the difference between the principal facade and the street-facing facade?
Say, principal and.
Well, define principal facade, what is a principal facade?
I can think of a couple of houses that are actually situated on the lot 90 degrees to way, the way you would have thought they would have.
And, and I don't think, don't think of principal facade as singular, you may have, quite, quite frankly, more than one.
Do we define what principal means? Do we have a definition for that?
This is no.
Yeah, mine, mine, too, that's why I was questioning, because I'm not sure, most things we talk about street-facing are not street-facing.
And I'm actually thinking of one of the houses that has been before us multiple times on Short Road.
Right. Well, I understand, I understand your point, absolutely agree, but, but unless we defined it clearly, I mean, because I could, on this, I could go put, put one in on the street-facing facade if it wasn't der, termed principal.
And the question that I had also related to this...
Confusing to me, that's all.
If you have a property that sits relatively close to the street, as you go around the corner from what we might all define as the street-facing or principal facade, there's some windows on the side that are more easily visible from the street than ones farther back, do we not care about that? It's a question, not a statement.
If, if, if they're going to match what's already on the building?
Hundred percent match.
Okay.
I don't think that should be...
Other than just changing from like wood to vinyl.
I don't think it should be minor work if it's a new, brand-new installation, myself.
Well, it's kind of like your roof, it's if we're replacing it with the same thing...
But we're saying a new, like a...
I'm saying a new, you're putting in a new hole.
Oh, that, okay, that's different, yes.
I have a problem with that.
Yeah, I think that, that would not be minor.
I have a problem with that being minor work.
Anywhere on the building.
Well...
Is it, or not?
I, I know the dilemma here is principal versus front-facing, but really, the essence of this is, if it's at the back of the house and ain't nobody going to see it, and it's the same kind of windows everyone, why does that person have to come back through it?
Your neighbor sees, your neighbor sees it, right?
Maybe, but, but the intent is that it, you're not making a material change, you're not materially affecting...
You're affecting the way the outside of the, even if you put it on the back, you're affecting the way the outside of that house looks.
Materially, you know, you're not, you're not, that's just what this is proposing to do, that it's, yes, yes, it is something that requires an approval.
But we're preserving the historic character for all views, I mean, truly, I mean, if a neighbor could see...
But then we, by that, by that, we shouldn't allow anything to change.
Well, we do have restrictions, I mean, it should be subject to the approval, I think, of a commission, then, I guess, is what I'm, because there's too many variations possible.
But if, okay, so if, if it's a major work, you got to look at, look at the standards that are, that are in place now. Okay, must be congruous with the Pioneer's historic district, whatever that means, which is horrible standard.
Well, it's the core of what we do.
Yeah.
That's not a standard, though. Your standard, or previously, your guidelines, are your tool to point toward what that, to point up at congruity, not to say, just regurgitate.
They hire us to do.
Snap-in muttons are not appropriate. Glass block windows are not permitted on street-facing elevations. You can't paint, or tint, or film glass windows on street-facing elevations, you can't put a sliding door on street-facing elevation, that's really it.
So what if I decide the whole back of my house, I'm going to, I just want one window right after another, lining them all up?
Only thing you have is...
Trust, trust off to go, yeah, this is, this is material.
This, this doesn't, this doesn't appear to be same style, material, size, and color.
Yeah, so it's all, every window is...
Well, I think that's when you get back to compatibility, and, and you back to what our prime standard is, which it has to be congruent with the rest of the village.
Proportion, shape, positioning, proportion, shape, positioning, to me, that was X, X, X.
Well, I have no problem offloading a lot of this on the staff, but at some point, our discretion has to enter into this, right, when we talk about congruence, right? Isn't that our discretion as a commission, right?
Yes, that's, that's our whole job, actually, is congruency.
I, I don't see what's wrong with the way it's written now.
Well, I still have my question, principal facade, what's the difference between a principal facade and a, and a front-facing?
That's, we're not to that one yet.
Okay.
But we're getting there. So I get what it says now, is new windows and doors is easily visible from the street, should be compatible with existing units, blah, 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 so what's wrong with that as-is? It's not minor work, it brings before us new windows and doors, period.
Where are you reading, David?
I'm on page 20, number 10.
See where I got that language from?
Yeah, I think it's good as-is.
What is good as-is?
The question of allowing the staff to review as minor work, new windows or doors.
Just as it's currently written in the standards.
Right, no change.
I just wasn't clear what you were saying was good as-is.
But then you, you would be in "and's" camp, that I, that staff wouldn't be able to approve new installation, like, I'm sorry, a new opening, basically.
Right, new window or door.
I would agree with that, too, the new ones should come to us. If it's a total replacement of the exact same thing, maybe other than material, staff can do that. That's, that's, that's a no-brainer, there's no decision really to be made there. But if it's anything basically other than that, if you're going to cut another hole in the building, or doing something else to the building...
The rest of your suggestion, Alex, I'm in favor of. The rest of your suggestion, Alex, I'm in favor of, just that three words, and new installation. I like it the way it is.
Okay, so as long as it's, it can be a different material now, as long as it's compatible, you can change. Okay.
As long as it looks the same.
I'm not opposed to us, in essence, turning out to rubber stamp something, just because we look at it and we say, well, that's fine. I'm trying to understand what sort of, there's a, a solid piece of wall somewhere and for whatever reason somebody wants to put a window there and the window's going to look exactly like all the other windows. On what basis would we say, no, you can't do that?
Depends on the arrangement of the window opening and the rest of the facade.
It would go back to the proportion, shape, positioning, pattern, size and color.
That's right.
But right now, the current standard is, I think, well, the one that David just read is a, should.
I guess Ann made a good example of the point at hand. Suppose somebody wanted to put in on this solid wall, fill it up with windows of matching, otherwise matching, and it might destroy the character of that facade by virtue of their, their arrangement.
I think anytime you impact the way that thing's going to look on all four sides, top and bottom, top anyway, then that is kind of what we got to figure out, is it congruent with the rest of the, of the village?
And congruency is our whole, is our whole world.
If it's not congruent, then we have to say why, we're going to approve it in the first place.
But you can't arbitrarily apply something that you don't have a standard in place for. So that's why these have got to be.
If the purpose was to win a debate, I would say if all the other windows have, let's say, at least a foot between the sides of the two windows and suddenly they're smashed together, I would argue that that is not congruent.
Right.
And if the spacing is the same, if it meets the other criteria, then you can't do what, what Ann is proposing. I would certainly never want to have that get approved. No question about that.
And you would, and you would be able to articulate that and have that stated beyond the record based on what was presented to you. Historical data, what you have there is this, your, your dimensions are this, your style is that, your material is this, this facade has.
A change.
Three over here, three over here, now you're proposing it. So I, I, don't worry about that.
I'm also, I'm also fine with taking out new installation. This is not a, this is not a line in the sand debate for me. And I agree with David. I think the remainder of the language, I think, is fine as written.
Going back to page one on the minor work, the second new bullet says resurfacing with a compatible substitute material. Resurfacing with a compatible substitute material. The next bullet says an allowable substitute material. Is there a reason for using allowable in one place and not in the other?
Talking about the fourth bullet point down on D.
Just the difference between substitute and allowable.
Or compatible and allowable.
Yeah. I don't think allowable has to be used. Conversely, we could just insert allowable in the other bullet as well.
I don't know if we have a list of allowable's.
Have a specific list, but we do have it prohibited in the standards that we'll say if one is.
So everything other than.
Everything prohibited items is allowable.
I'm not so sure I'm keen on that either.
From that, their purview, might not be the others.
My, my only point is that it jumps out at me that there's a difference and I don't understand, in the two bullets, and I don't understand the rationale for the difference.
Right.
If there's no rationale for it, then they should have the same language. I don't care which word we use.
I agree. It should be one or the other word.
Save letters, let's remove allowable.
And I would actually both agree with that point and also coming back to, as a statement that was made earlier when we were talking about difference between the PDO and our guidelines, to the extent possible, I think they all ought to conform with one another. They may, there may be some cases where they cannot or should not, but where we can, they should certainly not be in conflict.
Right, we should make an evaluation when we make our standards, make that evaluation you just talked about, but because if they change the PDO and we don't agree with that change, then ours should remain the same.
Agreed.
And so that's why when we did the big modification, we talked about that, you know, well, why don't we just reference the PDO? Well, the reason you don't just reference the PDO is because if the PDO changes and we don't think that should change in the historic, and besides, then you get into having to mash the two all the time. If you change it over here, you got to, yeah, they're standalone. But I agree, where we can and where we agree, they should match. There's no reason to have a mismatch just because.
Creates confusion and.
We can't, logically, we could require, we could be more stringent.
Yes.
Than the PDO.
Can't be less.
Can't be less.
Right.
We can't insist that something may be violative of the PDO in order to get our approval.
But we can be more stringent.
And obviously, anything that would be elevated to the decision of this commission will be vetted for those applicable standards by staff.
Right, before it comes here.
I guess, just a question for you, Alex. The reason new application, new installation is in there is because in certain circumstances, in your opinion, there's stuff that's so minor that could be handled at a staff level that doesn't need to come here. Is that, is that sort of that new installation? Is that, that was the intent of putting that in here?
Yes, and I, and I do think that there very much are cases where those changes or additions would be very minor, but then I can also see conversely where there could be a situation where there is a more material change happening to that structure.
Well, I guess, I agree with everything that's been said, but I also think there's, if there's enough meat behind this to protect you, so that if a new installation is not compatible in style, proportion, shape, positioning, pattern, size, and you just go, I'm not making this court, goes to HPC. And you say, if you have the exact same size window and you have eight of them in a row, well, you've got four, four things here that, that wouldn't meet. You know, and I can see, because I know like the transom window in a bathroom, maybe there's a window that's this size on the back, or if someone has one window opening above their kitchen sink and wants to rip out that one window and make it a double window. Does that person have to wait a month, pay $500 to come before us and we go, it's good?
And.
And I trust, I trust staff and I trust Alex to handle something that insignificant that doesn't change the way that property looks if it's on the back of the house.
Trying to take subjectivity out of anything that is, is delegated to staff, though, right? And I think there's just too much subjectivity here.
To the extent practical, there's, there's going to be that and.
It's a subjective goal comes to us.
If it's, if it's widely subjective, yes. If there's something that you can't make of.
You shouldn't put him in, in the awkward position of having to determine, is it too subjective, then it must come to us or not? I, that's what I'm thinking, but, and Alex isn't going to be here forever, you know? What if somebody brand new comes in?
Hope's not.
Huh? And takes Alex's place and, you know.
We assume that Alex trains his replacement.
I don't know.
There's always a next generation who has.
I'm not sure that always works out.
Always somebody better.
I don't want to speak for Alex. You have this in here for a reason. It's not something that this is a burden on you. You think, you obviously have this in here and you wouldn't have it here if you thought it was a burden.
For every scenario that I've been able to logically play out in my mind without going absolutely mind numbingly crazy, which is where I was at last week, and trying to think this through, yes, and, and to, to Richard's point, that some of the intent, you know, forgive me because, you know, I'm into the day to day, I'm thinking, I'm, you know, sometimes I.
Perspective.
When I come to you guys with certain things, I neglect to tell you all the, the thought processes behind that instead of just maybe expecting you to, you know, be in the trenches with me, you know, and I understand, you know, you don't have that. But a lot of times where this is coming up is new construction. As you know, if, if you, if you guys have ever been through that process, it's rarely with, with, you know, existing, something that you're happy with. It's, you know, you're changing something, the transom windows are always, you know, it's too.
Can't find a window or whatever.
Right now, that's been terrible. That's been a terrible consideration to try to come in. You know, the bathroom or this, this closet's too dark. My wife wants to, you know, there, there is another case today, not that this was the reasoning that was driving it, you know, where there's, there's a change in, in the dimension, basically.
Yeah, they want to put another window in for whatever reason.
Yeah, and, and it could be something that is not on a primary principle, street facing, whatever terminology you want to throw at it. I, I don't have any heartburn with applying with this, but echo exactly what John said and what I said when I started this meeting. This is.
I weigh hashin'.
This is not, yeah, this is, I would rather put my energy elsewhere if I had to. But thank you for the trust, Richard.
I, I, I mean, I, I understand because, I mean, either way, I don't want to, we, none of us want to see a case for 60 seconds where we sit down, staff open, it's, we're good, you almost don't need to be here, but what you're doing is we want to make the rule so that we don't have a case come before us that should have come before us. So I understand Ann's point as well. So.
It seems to me that it would be wise to have some generic statement in here, the effect of which is to say that even if something appears to meet all the minor work requirements, if in staff's judgment, it just doesn't look right for the historic district, or it's questionable, or it's questionable, it ought to authorize the staff to say no.
It'd say no.
So that Alex can point to that and say, look, I know you tried to, to do everything right, but we've got some serious concerns here, so you're going to have to go to the commission.
That's right.
So we, we have that in several places in the document instead of just, no, all right.
So you got something to point to.
I'm going to work backwards from it here, starting with major work, minor work items not approved by the village planner. Just because it does meet the criteria of minor work by reading or by an interpretation, does it mean that I must give them an approval?
That's, that's the point I'm, I'm emphasizing, yes.
And, and, and the preamble of, of major work, more substantial nature than minor work projects, or minor work not approved by planning staff, so it shows up yet again.
What's in there? Just on the reverse side.
Some cases, the village planner may elect to refer a minor work case to the HPC for consideration. I always have, staff always has that card we have to play. If something just doesn't feel right, or, or we feel uncomfortable, maybe, okay, it might meet this standard, maybe there is some subjective wording in it, but based on what we've got and what they just, the applicant's providing us, it's.
Ain't there?
Some uneasiness there.
Yeah.
You know what, we, in zoning regulations, that happens, too. And there's, basically, that's what you have a board of adjustment for. If you don't feel comfortable making, you, you can't necessarily deny someone, like I'm not denying a COA, I'm elevating it to another approval or another interpretation by a board that's going to conduct an evidentiary hearing.
Well, you can't deny it, can you? That, if, if you go to deny it, it has to come here.
Yep, there's no authorization to turn anyone down for a COA by staff.
Non-approve it.
Right.
And that just means it comes up to us.
We're the only ones that can disapprove.
Right.
Or not approve, you never disapprove it, you just don't approve it. He don't approve it, we don't approve it, it ain't approved, it's all over.
So where are we?
Try again. I still want to go back to principal facade and answer that question.
I think that's a good point.
Street face, anything. I think we're fine with it, we just need direction.
Well, I just need to understand where it's defined, what the difference between.
Whatever definition we come up with, I think also minor work has to say, you can't have a new installation under minor work and then down below have adding windows on street facing facades.
Yeah.
Without eliminating somewhere in the minor work except for on street facing facades.
Maybe that's a better way to handle it than on principal. You're describing it by not, you know what I mean, by, by describing what, what's not allowed.
I know, John's right. We have come up with some buildings where, and I've seen them, where the, what I would consider the principal or the front facing is facing at the backyard, flat out facing. If you go look at the house, it was designed that that be the front of the house, and what's in the front of the house would look like the back of a house to any other person.
You've got some.
They're strange things.
Narrow lots, narrow, deep lots, and you put the house inside with it.
I mean, Kevin Drums is a good example. His, his, if you look at the street facing and he's on a corner, so you really got two of them, but neither of those two sides of that house, I would call the front of the house, on cloak, you know, on those kind of terms. So I understand the idea of principal, but that's where we got to clarify it in the standard. Are, are we going to apply that to the principal facing, which in Kevin's house would be the back? Or are we going to apply it to the street facing? And that's where you need to come up to it. And what do you do? And this, it's the same kind of question, like in Kevin's as well, too. He sits on a corner a lot and the house is snuggled up into the corner, so you've got two street facing sides.
I think the intent of what we do is, I think, street facing is closer to it. We're, we're concerned with visual appeal as people drive by and maintaining those standards, not what would happen if they stopped, the car got out and walked into the backyard.
But what if you're a neighbor and you're looking at a wall of glass?
That's.
That's still, huh?
I still don't think that would meet the standard, though.
You're not going to approve a wall of glass.
It, proportion, shape, positioning, style.
We can add scale for you, Ann, because I know it's missing there.
What dimension?
And you can also put screening in in the back, which you can't always.
So.
But from your point of view in terms of doing your job, would it be easier for you to use the word principal facade rather than street facing or anything, and not define it? So you then get to apply that standard to the particular case before you in your own professional judgment. And somebody can say, well, wait a minute, I don't think that's the principal facade. And you say, yes, it is. That's, that's my determination, that's your principal facade.
I think that's a, that puts in a problem for us, though.
Why?
Because we then have to decide what the answer is. At some point, we have to decide what's street facing. Like in, I go back to Kevin's house. We argued that very point because he wanted to change the door, what is on blue, and the other street, and he couldn't do it because it was, we, we had to figure out what's street facing. So you end up having to, you really do, in some cases, end up having to define street facing because otherwise you don't know what standards to apply.
And you have a couple of streets where houses, lots run from one street to another.
The case comes before us and it has a standard that says you can do such and such, or you can't do such and such on the principal facade. We have to decide on this house, on this lot, what, which is the principal facade.
Are they defined? That's the, my only, my question comes back down is what's the defin, I understand the definition of street.
Not defined, it's determined by us.
Then he will never be.
Congruence isn't, isn't defined.
Then, then he will never be, then that makes a drawn conclusion and you can't get.
I feel like we've already put that to bed because this is for adding or eliminating. And we've kind of already gotten consensus that you're not in favor of that being a minor work.
Okay, if that's, if that's the way we're going, then you're right, this, because this will go away.
They, uh, can we negotiate a little bit?
You still want to have, be able to do something.
Eliminate, maybe, not on street facing.
Why does that have to be street face? Why can't we say not visible from the street?
Because. That gets into as much as an argument because I can walk over here and kick around and see.
We've had this a couple of times on Linden Road, when the folks wanted to put the pool in, we said, well, it's not going to be visible from the street. If someone got out their car, went around the side, you could probably see it, like John said, but as long as to the layperson, it's not visible without walking onto their property and nosing about. I'm on a corner lot, two, and you could see it come, I'm actually on a corner lot, but you could see three sides of my house. So what I would say is, on those three sides, no bueno. But on the one side you can't see, okay, well, that's the side, we could do this. On another house, you may only have one principal facade, which is the main view that you see and then trees, and you don't see the other three sides of the house. May, maybe he has more leeway on that kind of house and that lot and that configuration, so.
There is, I can't remember the name of the other street, but Cadell and one other street, there are lots that go from one to the other street.
Yep.
There's an obvious, normally, there's an obvious front of the house, but there's also a rear of the house that is visible from the street.
From the street.
That is not the.
Cody, maybe?
Well, Ann lives across the street from that house, she's looking right at the back of the house.
Yeah, right. So again, that comes back to that same, our, the same problem that we have each time, is, is the, in Kevin's house, the principal's on the back. So if you say principal, then you wouldn't be able to change your back window, but you'd be able to do it to a street-facing one.
Who elevated that decision again?
Wasn't on that one, but I'm assuming it was you.
So.
But if it's visible, then every house, every side is visible, so Alex goes, it's visible from every avenue, I'm not going to approve this, kick it to HPC.
Yeah, we had, we had the, the issue with the, the house on, what is it, McCaskill, that was putting the.
Vinyl windows?
No, it was, uh, the, uh, like, electricity panels, the, the.
Solar panels.
Solar panels, on the back of.
Yeah, right there on the corner.
Quote-unquote, back of the house. And, and one of the questions was, what's visible from the street?
Highly, I think, highly visible.
Depends on whether the trees get cut down on the vacant lot, on the northern corner of, on the northern side of that house. And if the trees get torn, get, get cut down, eventually they will, somebody's going to build a house there, then something that's invisible becomes visible.
But we conditioned that there be trees camouflaging that, on that case, so.
One line of trees on McCaskill.
Right. From the other way, though.
But the other side of the house is, is now blocked by woods.
Yeah.
But it's a, it's not, it's a lot that doesn't belong to the owners of that house, that's my only point.
Do the best you can with them, some of them, you're not going to answer all of them.
I know you were negotiating for something there.
I'm back to adding and, and eliminating now.
I, I mean, I, I know there's some issue, I'm, I'm fine with it, if there's some, if, if that language can be tweaked to say, not visible from the street, and again, there's enough media that if Alex is not comfortable, he can even add the word scale in there behind positioning or shape, just to give him even more, but it, it, it would, it would come back to us. I, I think we may get a handful of these cases a year, and if it saves someone thirty days and five hundred bucks to come and do this.
Four hundred bucks, you save him four hundred dollars.
Well, I think it's five hundred bucks, isn't it?
Yeah, but you have to pay a hundred for the minor.
Oh, yes, I forget about that.
Well, which one are we talking about?
I have no idea.
We're talking about the minor category.
Windows and doors.
Talking about the major work category.
The, the third bullet under major work, I think.
What have we decided under C, for the third bullet under C, where are we there? Kind of affects what we do.
The, the two are somewhat linked in the sense that you've got new installation in both places, one conditioned on street-facing, the other not.
So what did we decide for minor work? Is there a consensus? I agree, my suggestion, we leave it alone, except for the three words, and new installation, just take that out of there.
That's what we've been talking about for twenty minutes.
Well, I thought we, somebody just said we were talking about major works. So what are we talking about?
The street-facing is the major.
In a tug-of-war right now, I think.
Well, let, let's move on, we can always come back to it, how about that?
We will. Otherwise, we're going to spend an hour off on this.
That's really, that's really.
That's the end of it, kind of.
Pretty much it.
I have one other thing.
How many cases do you have, like, Alex?
I would say just about every month.
All, all in non-street-facing sides? Every month?
Adding, eliminating, or changing the material.
Well, then, no, I'm just saying, a new hole.
Okay, new hole. You guys helped me out, you, you, you know, early in the year, oh, God, it is early in the year, last year.
Early, last year.
Uh, I, I may not have been as heavily involved, I'm sure, hearing and discussing, but not to great detail.
There aren't many, are there?
Six to eight, maybe.
I don't remember seeing them in the minor work.
Six to eight.
Oh, I didn't remember that many, but.
Cases that involved.
Really?
You know, they, they could be the, the cursor that triggers, you know, a handful of changes that now have to be a major work.
Yeah, I don't recall seeing many in, in the minor work.
I would have to do another analysis.
But, that's why I think we're arguing over something that's very, very rare.
Shannon worked with some of our other staff, and, and you may recall the, the, we, we put it in the visual, right? And a lot of that was windows, windows and doors, and, and exterior material. We didn't take it that step further, to quantify how many of them were putting a new hole. I mean, I, I go back to the one on Village Green, for sure, just because that's a recent memory that I was involved with. And two, site conditions with, with that one, the way it was tucked in and nestled in there to the resort property. No one, no one but that homeowner's ever going to see that facade.
And I wouldn't have, personally, wouldn't have any issue with new installations on non-street-facing.
Not visible from the street.
Not visible from the street, I don't care, whichever, however you want to call it.
We're missing Terry, right?
Still in Mexico, or wherever he is, I think.
He could care less.
Right now, I'm sure he's drinking a, a little drink with an umbrella, sitting on a beach somewhere.
Want to kind of straw vote that, with street-facing or visible?
I can make a comment to what Ann said, because it's a good point, on how, if we think we get four or five of these minor works, how many people want to do work, want to make a modification, figure out this is major work, and go ahead and do it anyway, and it never gets seen as minor work?
Yeah, but that's.
I mean, so, I, I think if, if something like that, you may get another four or five of these cases that just show up as minor work by virtue of people going, oh, it's not HPC, I don't have to go in front of the board, I can handle this at staff level with Alex. I, I think you have more people doing it the right way, coming in compliance. I mean, where I live, I hear chop saws every weekend, all my neighbors are fixing on their houses, it's just, that's what people do on the weekend, a lot of these retirees just work on their homes, half of the stuff.
What you don't know.
Go ahead and just do it, but, you know, by doing something like this, and less, not lessening the standard, but lowering the barriers to entry for some of the more minor stuff that's not as material, I think you will have more people do it the right way, and do it through staff.
I don't disagree with you, but remember this whole thing is a statutory requirement. It's not something that we can take into consideration, other than what we're allowed to do, and I'll tell you, what you just said is not an allowed issue that would, would be allowed into this discussion, because we're here to, to, to adjudicate all of those. It's not a question whether they do it or not.
Yeah, we're not compliant.
You know, it's, it's, it's not a compliance question, and, and so, so, although I agree with you, and I'm sure it's done from time to time, I have no idea how much, because nobody does, but it's not something that we can use as justification to change something or not change something, that's my point.
I agree with you, but I'm, I'm saying it in reference to Ann's comment about the load of the minor work cases, and how, how often they come up.
I hate to say it, but that's irrelevant.
Well, no, what, what.
Statutory, that's irrelevant.
What, what is, what is relevant is this. You know, if, uh, if people who live in the historic district know that they can, that they're doing something they think is relatively minor, they can go to the staff and they can get approval for it relatively expeditiously and so forth and so on. One set of situations. If, on the other hand, they are aware that the only way they can get approval.
They go to staff and staff says no, and.
To us.
Right.
And have a, a hearing and so forth and so on. Now, I don't know how that affects people who are trying to get away with something. What I do know is, it has an adverse effect on the good people living in the historic district who want to be good neighbors and good residents of the historic district, if we put unreasonable burdens on them. I think what Alex is trying to do is to come up with ways that will eliminate unreasonable burdens while still protecting the historic district. I think that, that is a, a reasonable objective, and I think we've made a lot of progress towards achieving it.
That is a rationale for the change, I don't think is, is, is there, if we can, if we can do something that says that, but because somebody's, and the compliance side is not complying, is not a reason for us to change something.
Nothing in the statute that says that you can't add a window to your back.
Nothing in the statute that says you can't do anything, you just can't change the congruency with it.
That's right, and is it congruent or not? Not until we decide whether it's congruent or not, and how, you know, so.
But whether they do it or not is not part of that, part of it, that's a compliance issue, which is outside the scope of anything we.
Right, I'm not talking about compliance, I'm talking about, about having a, a government that works for the people.
Right. Okay, I'm not going to argue.
We are, we are government officials. You know, that's, we get those big paychecks every month, you know, because we're government officials. Right?
So, if, maybe to try to bring this to a close, which may not be possible, but to try. I think if, if we think backwards, the, the first question is, do we want to draw, make a distinction between either street-facing or principal, whichever standard we choose or not?
I, I'm, I'm going to say street-facing now, even as the one who had the language principle in there, street-facing is more consistent throughout the document.
I'm content with that, for the moment, we will say street.
I agree.
I agree, too.
So we agree, street-facing will be the standard. We then have three, we have three choices, or we have three possibilities, you have elimination, replacement, or addition. Elimination wasn't addressed at all in minor work, which may be fine, maybe we want to leave elimination and addition as major work, and replacement as minor work. Again, on, on street-facing, which then the question becomes, okay, so if it's not street-facing, is there a different standard, and if so, should it be spelled out? And that way, we, we cover all the bases, because right now, we haven't addressed elimination of a window, even on a non-street-facing as minor work. It appears, well, no, it, we haven't, on a non-street-facing, we haven't addressed it at all.
I would be willing to, more likely be in agreement with allowing elimination or addition of non-street-facing facades under minor work.
I would feel okay with that, given that Alex always has the ability to say, you know, there's just, there's something about this that doesn't feel right, and I wanted to go to the commission. Could be something that comes up in conversation with the builder, where you just aren't sure.
Did bring up the idea that there isn't anything here that talks about, Alex couldn't tell them they could make one go away, the way it's worded now.
Right.
Well, that's a good point, and I like, I think, if it's on a non-street-facing, if you can't see it from the street, Alex can approve it.
If it beats these standards. More than one street-facing facade on a house.
Can there be?
Can there be?
Absolutely. Sure, corner lots almost always have two, at least.
So then, the, the phrase ought to be, a, a street-facing facade, not the street-facing facade, just to make that point clear.
Or street-facing.
That's, that's what I've, what I've sketched in here. So could, I, I know, Ann, you guys, but I'm going to throw a draft out here.
Okay.
Um, a, a new bullet under minor work, this is, you guys, we're still talking about this, this is eliminating, adding or eliminating windows on non, on a non-street-facing elevation.
Or, how about plural, Eric? Street-facing facades, plural.
A, non-street-facing wouldn't specify how many street-facing facades there were.
Right.
It's simply merely that in Alex's opinion, it doesn't, right, it could be seven, who knows? In Alex's opinion, it's not a street-facing facade, therefore it falls under minor work.
It either added, deleted, or changed it.
I'm okay.
That make sense? Disagree with not okay.
So, so, so the replacement, we're taking out the, and new installation, and the rest of that stays.
Yeah, because that's more for materials.
Doesn't address street-facing or not.
That's more for changing the material, yes, so now if we add, add that bullet of adding or eliminating, yada, yada.
Okay.
Then I, I think that would cover the original intent that I had, and.
And do we, does replacement on street-facing facades need to be major work, or that's still covered under minor work? I think it is.
I'd leave replacement there, I, I think I'm, the only word, three words I'm suggesting changing under minor work are, and new installation becomes, and, uh, new installation or removal of windows on non-street, on a non-street-facing facade. Leave, leave replacement just as Alex has proposed.
You would have add, but not eliminate?
No, it'd include eliminate.
And, and I think we could, that third bullet, I think we can take that out, and new installation completely, let that bullet speak solely to, if you're changing, everything is the same, you're just changing the material, basically. And then a brand-new bullet that you don't have, that I just, you know, the adding or eliminating.
Okay.
It's the same place.
But you've still got to have the compatible material, and it's got to be style, proportion, shape, duh, 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 duh. And also, this would not change the standard that if you have a existing residence, and you have existing wood windows on street-facing elevation, the, the standard is that they not be replaced, or they have to be replaced in kind. So I would not be able to allow a substitute material for wood on a street-facing elevation, period. That's already in place at, at this time.
So that's major work? Oh, boy. Because I would even go so far as to say, why is replacing with the very same material? Why isn't that basic work and routine maintenance? That's how, what I would say. I mean, assuming they have to come to you in the first instance anyway to say, hey, I'm thinking of doing X, right? So, um.
I, I absolutely agree, any, anytime you're replacing anything with an identical product only brand-new, that's maintenance.
That's what I say.
What's the repair?
Yeah, repair and maintenance.
You can, you can, you, you recall, we had some of this discussion a handful of months ago, between replacement and repair?
Yes, yes.
I don't remember that. Um, I mean, you can, you can completely replace things like light fixtures, gutters, downspouts, you can also repair gutters and downspouts, but, I mean, if.
Is the implication that when I replace the window, I also replace the trim, because you, it's not plug-and-play?
If your house burned down, and you wanted to rebuild it exactly the way it was, you shouldn't have to talk to Alex at all. At the extreme.
Well, you, you would from a planning and zoning side, but other than that.
Right.
From a planning side, because you'd still need a permit.
Unless it's that shipping container house on Midland.
We'll fix that.
But I think a roof, if you're replacing your roof with the same thing, I don't think that, you know, a whole new roof, not just repairing it.
Do you consider a substitute material as that sort of replacement?
Uh, it's got to be exactly the same, just escape.
Wood for wood, or vinyl for whatever it is.
And that should be.
The, the older terminology of John, Tom, Richard, Eric, to think to, you kind of came in, as these things were getting the final button up and forwarded to council in twenty nineteen, I believe. We had that normal maintenance certificate, which was basically same paint, everything, basically, any type of replacement in kind was almost a normal maintenance. But now, we still issued something, you still had to give us an application, but that was before we got to the point where we've got a, well, which is tied to the software system, which is tied to other items that I would like to get to in the next ten minutes, maybe. So, becomes a, a record-keeping, if you want to call it a widget-counting, opportunity, and to recover administrative costs. Normal maintenance in kind, that type of stuff, when that would come across my desk, it's five minutes.
Yeah.
And there is no cost. It was printing the thing, signing it, scanning it, here you go. We had some discussions about that before, you know, maybe bringing something like that, because it would be good to issue something, have something on file as time keeps going, now everything's digitized, that way.
I'm not sure I spend a whole lot of time enforcing that either.
Yeah, because if someone sees.
But that's not our business, so.
I'm putting up, I'm putting a new roof out and say, oh, did she get permission? You've got some record that, oh, yeah.
Yeah. Instead of, well, I talked to staff down there, I don't know what their name was, somebody who's probably long gone, and they told me I didn't need anything.
No charge for that, just out of curiosity.
There, there was, but that was under the old system, yes.
But the, would that re-trigger that? Just curiosity, it's not our business. But would that re-trigger that? Just curiosity. It's not our business.
I don't know how far those conversations have, I don't think they've really gone past myself and Darren, honestly.
Are we done with this page?
I just, one other question, Alex. You, you used, when I first read the word resurfacing, I thought that was a strange word, but if.
It's just an existing language.
You're talking about replacing siding for siding, not if the house was built with stucco and somebody put siding on it 30 years ago and now I want to take it back to stucco.
Yeah, there, there's another.
Mention on the original style.
Yeah, there, there's another bullet that's covered that says basically removing material to expose original or something.
Okay.
But no, I don't like, I really don't like resurface. I don't, it's what's in this document.
It's not a construction term. And resurface is asphalt or parking lot or.
I don't, I really don't.
You don't resurface siding. You re-side the house, you know, so I don't.
You take a layer off and whatever's there is there.
Now that you have a full other month.
Yeah. Like what?
Skinning. Reskinning.
I think you have another month to come up with a replacement for resurfacing.
What about putting a dash between re and surfacing?
Let's debate that for our.
You're all the lawyers. I mean, it, you know, if you look at the terminology used, it's exterior walls and trim. I mean, it could be, we could use exterior materials, changing exterior materials, exterior material change from the original that's compatible and blah, 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 blah.
I'm okay with that.
I don't, I don't like you. I do not like that term, but it's all throughout this document.
You want to move on to something completely else, but I think we have one more paragraph on the next page.
Oh, man, do we?
I didn't write this.
I didn't either, did I?
Or did I? Go ahead, sorry.
Presumably this, this windows and doors, the new bullet point to this is.
Could I interject? I have one nitpick on item four above that. Can we hit that real quick?
Item four of what? Windows and doors?
Under exterior walls and trim, just below where you change should to must, which I, I completely agree with. I don't like the original language. The word composition has to do with the arrangement of things. I think you need, mean to speak to the material of things, right? Or are you talking about the arrangement of things?
Substitute material matching the original comp, is it made of the same thing as the original material?
I think that's what's meant.
It's an original material, maybe the same thing. I don't know.
For me, speaking of architecture, the word composition has to do with arrangement, not material. What do we mean?
I would say substitute material matching the original material.
Well, if composite, if the intent there, again, I'm speculating because we, I don't know how many of us that are here now, yes, we've looked at it, we've reviewed it, but I don't know that we wrote that language. If it, to me, I think like look and feel. Like, you know, you have the like fiber cement material or the shake material that kind of has the feeling of the wood grain and texture, maybe texture instead of composition.
Got texture in there already.
Got texture in there already.
Pattern and profile. I just think we don't need the word composition.
It removes any question.
Place in kind with a substitute material.
Matching.
Matching dimensions, size, shape, pattern, blah, blah, blah.
I'm better with that.
I think that's fine.
Take the word out. Okay. End of nitpick.
Okay.
So in, in item two, under windows and doors, understanding that this is all under the macro heading of changes to existing residences, what are the new uses for existing residences that would require things like that?
Basically, and this has happened before, John, because of the non-conformity that we have in our district, you very well could be a house there that is not up to current code. New owner buys the property and they want to do some wholesale, just say interior remodel only. There is a certain threshold. Maybe they're in there, they're taking out walls, everyone's liking the open floor plan, open the kitchen up, things like that. And then all of a sudden the code official says, okay, now that you're changing all this in here, you know, your egress, your, your size for egress here is too small. So now they're going to have to open up their windows.
Well, I guess an easier explanation would be today it's a closet and we're, it's now going to become a kitchen. I want a window there. It's a different use. It's not a closet. It's a kitchen. We're not talking about.
Good point.
Fine. Thank you. I think we're done with this.
Before we, we escape the doors and windows thing, I was trying over the last, seems like three months before we, since we last met, to come up with something to, to bring before us that would help explain the things I look at when I'm considering doors and windows. What is it about windows that I, that I look at to decide whether they're historically appropriate? I came across a website that is very plain language with photographic illustrations. The website itself is really gaudy and awful, but the content is very easy to read and digest, to talk about the details of doors and windows, in particular windows in this case, that might be helpful. And if anyone here is interested, I'd be happy to share the website address.
Send it to all of us.
Yeah. Send it to all of us. That'd be great. You can delete it we don't want.
Shout us on there as well.
Say again?
Shout us on there as well.
Badly know, but I'll keep looking.
All right. You said you had one other thing.
Yeah, we, we, we need to wrap this up really soon so we can maybe, our fine folks in IT can see if they can get us some type of technology for the four o'clock. You guys got an email notification from Shannon earlier this week about probably terminology you don't really maybe think of using much. So I want to give a little update on that, but you know, start with recognition to Shannon and Kelly Chance, the village clerk. I know some of you have obviously dealt with, with Kelly as well. Shannon has been taking on some new opportunities to learn clerk duties as well as, so she can be there to, or at least this position, because of the similar duties in nature with being a clerk to this board, the board of adjustment, and the planning and zoning board, but, but be as a backup. And we have, you know, that, that opportunity there in case the need arose. So she's been spending some time with Kelly and come to find out that there's this other view that you can access within our online agenda system called Board View. We didn't know anything about it as, as even our staff. And, you know, Kelly was, was showing Shannon that Shannon now has the same privileges as Kelly does in case, you know, a council agenda item needs to be pushed through anything. And the idea was then born to, as we're moving to this digital environment that you've heard us talk so much about, that this might be a better, more user friendly opportunity for our advisory boards and also maybe the opportunity, which we're still trying to work out. There's some other kinks we run into of issuance of a, some, some piece of hardware, if it's as simple as a, an e-reader, where basically you use it to only access that Board View. So now hopefully you guys have set up and you've got a username, you've got passwords. It's just a little bit easier, more straightforward, I think, user friendly and bringing up the documents, separate agenda items. We're going to be using it now instead of just the typical public view, which you guys have been using and the other folks do. Just gives you, it's a different opportunity to be able to access the information that you need for your public hearing items or other work session business. So we were hoping to have time to do a little tutorial and show it to you, of course, as technology does do sometimes. It's failed, but play with it. I know, Tom, you've had a discussion with, with Shannon already.
Played with it. I was using it tonight.
Understand you're a fan of it, so he, he's going to be a, you're going to be the eternal salesman for us for the rest of the, for the group on it. But anyway, so that's where that came from. Again, we're in the trenches all the time. We maybe neglect in, you know, in some of our communication to say, hey, heads up, check this out. Here you go. But we hope you find it easier to navigate and a little bit more helpful as we start just kind of slowly moving and, and evolving. But that, that's what that was for us. But big thank you to Kelly and Shannon for, once again, trying to help us improve a little bit.
Tom, do you have enough experience with it yet to?
I can tell you some of the things I like about it.
Yeah.
If that's the kind of stuff you're looking at. It's, you can select, like there's one in here for this meeting and there's one in here for the next meeting. One of the first things that struck me was that you can pull up the agenda, you can pull up the, the addendums and everything else in the same screen. You don't have to set up one where you're looking at the agenda, another one looking for the staff report, another one looking for this. It all comes up in one place. So that's number one, is great, and it, it does, because you can go back and forth. The other part of it is allows you to take notes on things. So if you're out in the field, for example, and you want to take some notes, you can take them right on here. So I, and I played with that, you know, if you got a question, reviewing, it does the old minutes that are going to be reviewed and you can pull them up in here and make a little, it's a little like sticky note, electronic sticky note that you can put notes on so that if you got this electronic device, like a laptop or whatever, that it gives you the ability to look at that, go back and look at old agendas, go back and look at old minutes, view notes, view attachments without having to put another tab or another, another process up in front of it. It just pulls everything together very nicely. So it makes a lot, I, I sat here and used it tonight when we were doing through this stuff and I'll use, I'll use it for the next, for their regular meeting too, because you can pull things up and look at them and not have to get six screens open in 32 places.
You could see yourself driving around with that from site to site to site and making your notes right there.
If it allows instead of, yes.
And not have to shuffle paper, which in my case ends up all over the car and then have to.
Yeah, et cetera, et cetera. This would put it, if we're going electronic, in fact, I did even looking at the exhibits, you can blow it up, pull it down, you can expand them. It's a, it's still PDF, but you can enlarge the PDF so you can look at the top right corner of it if you need more detail, or you can bring it down to one whole site. So I, and as I told Shannon, I told Alex, I'm, it's a whole lot better than we got. You can make it for tablets or hybrids. I mean, you can make it for big screens, little screens. It's got quite a bit of, of use to it. So I think I found it very useful.
I have one related digital issue. It has to do with one of our, an example of it is one of our exhibits for this evening. The, it's, it's exhibit A dash 2.1. I think that sheet was originally an architect drawn 24 by 36 inch sheet. It's been reduced to eight and a half by 11. Sadly, it's so grossly distorted horizontally that it's, it's like a completely different design. So just heads up, if you're, if you're increasing or decreasing, make sure it's the same proportion.
It was, it was probably a scanned document that was given to us. It was probably originally architecturally done and then scanned and given to us as a digital document.
Maybe they did it. I don't know.
Yeah, that.
It's, it's extreme in this case.
Was, was that for 125, Kelly? Is that the?
It's absolutely a scanned document. Given to us that way.
Yes, 125.
Because I was going to observe that to the extent you have any influence over the font that these people choose, if they could choose any other font, because I can't believe there are any that are less legible than that, possibly due to the.
Hadn't been distorted.
Possibly due to the shrinking.
Yeah. You'd have been able to read it easily if it hadn't.
Believe it, believe it or not, there are still folks out there who hand draw that.
I like that.
But we're talking about.
If they hand print, then I can at least read what they say.
And it's, it's beautifully hand drawn. And, and you would have no trouble reading it if it hadn't been squished.
Squished. If somebody wants to look at this and take a quick look at it, it's on my laptop. You're welcome to come over and look at it.
Can, can I request that we have photos of existing homes and all the applications? Is that, can we do that? I'm just saying, there were photos that should have been included in some of these applications that would make it easier for us for reference and they weren't there. If we could do that, since we were talking about fonts and everything else. I, I thought we were going to have photos be part of the requirements. No?
I agree with you. It's helpful.
I think it's, isn't it nice for the record too, perhaps? And are we going to talk about signage at some point? Or is that another work session?
Not right now, because we have to let tech back in here. We aren't going to have anything. And he just walked through the door.
Do we need a motion to adjourn a work session? I don't think we adjourn for.
I will, I will entertain a motion that.
So moved.
Session be terminated.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are we going to have a work session next month or? Okay.